I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of September 22nd, 2014, to order. We would like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call shows all are present. Approval of the minutes of September 8th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
In the minutes on page, on the page exactly, page three, I believe my motion was not worded correctly. There was a portion that I mentioned about sewer mains, and that is not mentioned in the wording. So for the, for the record, I can, I can restate my motion for the record if necessary, or it's on tape, whatever is preferred. But as I mentioned, the portion about sewer mains is removed from, from the minutes.
Do you feel comfortable you can recreate what his motion was without him saying it?
I went word for word from the tape. I can listen to it again.
Yeah, in the tape, I said that I moved to accept the responsibility of the water and sewer mains and fire hydrants. And in the minutes, it says, there's no, there's no mention of sewer mains, so.
Anything else?
I move the minute.
Sure.
As amended, I guess.
And supported, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, further discussion? All in here say aye.
Aye.
opposed? I didn't see any bills, so I don't think we're going to be approving any bills. Approval of the agenda, any additions or deletions?
There would be two corrections. Under new business, we would change the motion, because that was a postponed motion, to read as the minutes were corrected, to accept all water and sewer mains and fire hydrants, as Councilman Rizzi stated. And the second is an addition of an executive session for consideration of real estate purchase.
Let me put that after council comments.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
One other thing that I noticed was not on the agenda, and I made a request on September 17th. I requested the following added Colonial Acres Utility Dedication. Discuss current status and review pending and open items for dedication. I wanted to have an open and honest discussion with everybody before we got into the motion, and I didn't see that on the agenda for tonight.
That's on the old business.
Yes, yeah. Well, I'm sure we'll cover it, but I've made, that's, that's not the wording I requested, so.
I took it directly from your email.
My email on 22nd says, "I would like the following added to the September 22nd City Council Agenda. Colonial Acres Utility Dedication. Discuss current status and review pending and open items for dedication." Above, well, the agenda says.
Review current status and allow representatives of Colonial Acres.
Yeah, that's not what I wanted to say, but.
I'm sorry, I mistyped it. I thought I took it directly from your email.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody want to approve the amended agenda?
Yeah, I'll move the agenda as amended, to add the executive session and add the addition of the word sewer in the motion under new business.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in here say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, at this time, it's a public comment. If you wish to speak on any item not listed on the agenda, you may do so. Come up to the microphone.
My name is Gordon Segal, I live at 240 Brookwood Drive. I just want to say how our football team did so well in beating the fifth in our district. And I tried to watch it on TV, and it wasn't on TV. Is our, the Halloween parade going to be on TV too? I'd like to ask that question. Somebody can answer it? Are we, are we broadcasting?
We can try to answer in comments at the end.
Are we, are we broadcasting anymore, or are we out?
Okay, that's your question on that? Okay, we can answer that during council comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Good evening. My name is Jasper Catanzaro, and I'm running to be your representative here in the 38th District. To say a little bit about myself, I worked at Ford Motor Company in the UAW. I joined the Army when I was 19 years old, went to Vietnam with the 1st Cav Division, and was wounded leading a patrol. Returning home, I went to college at night and graduated with honors from Wayne State University. I retired with 40 years of service. I then became active in the VFW and the American Legion in helping veterans. So why am I running for office? First, taxes, our pensions, our 401Ks, and at least 25 changes that have hurt retirees, young families, charities, and just about every working person in state. We are now one of the 10 worst states to retire in. Schools, in the 38th District, $52 million was cut in the last four years alone. Across-the-board cuts don't address school problems. Roads, Governor Snyder's very first budget, our roads were cut 12 percent. Michigan is now dead last in road funding, and we can see what that has done. Term limits was to get new blood and ideas and not elect the same people. My opponents have found a way around it, they're switching jobs. Our legislators are just following the party line, whether it's Republican or Democrat. They get full-time pay and only work 86 days a year. Our legislators are the fourth highest paid in the country. So what can I do? In most cases, the federal government gives the state $3 to $4 for every dollar we invest in infrastructure. So we need to stop diverting gasoline taxes and put that money into our crumbling roads and bridges. We need to fix the electrical grid. 10 to 40 percent of our electricity is lost in the transmission from the power plant to your home. Our water and sewer systems need to be fixed. Some of the pipes are 100 years old. That's why we had a record number of water main breaks this year. Right now, unemployment in Michigan is almost 20 percent higher than the US average. Michigan ranks 47th in employment. It has to be done anyway, so fixing the infrastructure would create thousands of good-paying jobs. And when people work, they pay taxes, they don't collect unemployment, and they spend money here in Michigan. It pays for itself and is good for business. And third, we need to spend wisely. This means infrastructure spending, school spending, and spending done to make sure we get value for our tax dollars. The cheapest price is not always the best value. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, and you people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Democratic Party. You have to run on one party.
Anybody else wish to speak? Go ahead, chief.
Just real quick, I apologize. To clarify for Pumpkin Fest coming up this weekend, we're supposed to have some gorgeous weather, and to hopefully alleviate some of the matters that arose in previous years, both nights are going to have a set occupancy limit. There's 1,600 for each night. Once that number is reached, those people will receive a wristband, and they will be free to come and go as they choose throughout the evening. But once that 1,600 is reached, no additional folks will be left in. So it'd be just like going to a concert or a movie theater. Once the tickets are sold out, they're sold out. But once you're in, you can come and go as you want. So especially for Saturday, it would be incumbent on folks if they want to make sure they can get in after the parade, go down, get your wristband, and then you can walk in at whatever time you want. So given the weather, I fully expect, and I hope for the organizers, that they sell out. But on the flip side of that, I do expect that there'll be some folks that probably get there once the event is sold out. One of the major issues last year was people being able to re-enter. We've corrected that issue. There's just, I think the popularity of this event has gotten to a point, as we discussed months ago, of where do we hold it and be able to fit all the people? For your knowledge, the occupancy this year is about double of what we were last year because of the expanded footprint. So more people will be allowed in, but I still hope and afraid, in the same sentiment, that it will sell out, and there'll be people that show up that will be turned away. But there won't be a line of folks to get in, because once it's sold out, at that point, it doesn't make any sense for people to wait around. So hopefully, they would then patronize the local businesses.
And chief, that's for the beer tent only.
That is for the beer tent. Thank, thank you for clarifying. That is, that is for the beer tent, and the beer tent will be open both Friday and Saturday this year. And that attendance, or that ticket policy, if you will, will be in place for both nights. So we've been in constant contact with both Chief Collins, Department Head Martin, myself, the Pumpkin Fest Committee, the occupancy thing, we've been working with them on. So we're going to see if it works. It's, there's been a lot of back and forth, and we did change things to try to address issues of previous years. So just wanted to put that out there.
So somebody comes, they don't want to go to the beer tent. They, they still have to have the, they're still part of the 1,600, right?
This, I should clarify, this is for the Wells Street Lot only. So there, there's an area that will be confined for the, for the music, and the beer tent is going to be one occupancy limit, and that's at 1,600. If someone wants to come down for the bouncies or the food vendors that are going to be on Whiplin Lake Street, that doesn't count, that's open.
I'm saying they go through the same gate to get in.
Yes, sir.
And they pay a fee to get in, drinking beer or not.
Correct. And I am unsure of what that cover charge is. I don't want to speak for that. I do know that there, there is a cover charge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else make sure? All right, old business. On discussion of Colonial Acres Utilities, review current status and allow representatives to speak, of course. We would anyways, don't have to have that written here. It would probably be helpful if we could tell you what we, we did meet as a group. Oh, what date was that? The 11th?
Tuesday after the last meeting.
Tuesday after the last meeting? All right.
Thursday after the last meeting.
Thursday. Okay, that's what's throwing me off there, okay. So that would be just about around the 11th. So I thought we made terrific progress and got a sense of direction. And then, and I felt, tell me if I'm wrong, I see the representatives I've met with sitting here. We agreed that it's possible that you, we would need more than this two weeks to really have every, all our Ts crossed, Is dotted that routine. And we, at that point, had also offered our personnel to help you reach your goal of meeting the letter of the law, so to speak. And so I know there's a rush, and you want, you want it done tonight. Personally, I'm having, I, from what I understand, we're 90, 95 percent of the way there. That's remarkable, I think. And I've heard nothing but positives lately, coming from Colonial Acres reps and so forth, but there were still a couple critical things, and I guess I should fire it over to you, Tim, to address what the real issues still left are.
What I would suggest is if it's okay with Jesse, Jesse might be willing to address some of the engineering issues, and I will address more of the legal issues. We did meet on Thursday, September 11th. Progress was made. I identified in writing some of the concerns that I had with the legal issues. I've worked with Ms. Kurtzweil since then, and we've made considerable progress regarding those issues. We've now received sealed and signed drawings from the surveyor at Mega. I think they're sealed by Mr. Pruss. I forget the gentleman's name who attended last meeting. We do have the easements. We're aware that some of the easements will be of narrower width than your policy requires. And I don't have great concerns from a legal standpoint. Jesse can help address that from an engineering standpoint. So the one thing that we do not have, that I think needs some work, that I need to comment on back to Ms. Kurtzweil, is a, it's a repair and maintenance agreement that will provide the city with some additional flexibility outside of the easements that are proposed for dedication, that would allow us to deal with unusual circumstances due to deflection or the pipe not being precisely where it's described, or encroachments such as buildings or an extremely deep pipe, such as a sewer pipe. That would allow us some additional space outside of those easements to make, to allow us to do what we need to do as far as repair, maintenance, and replacement ultimately. That still needs to be worked out. I have resolved, received additional documentation from Ms. Kurtzweil regarding the authority to sign the bill of sale and the easements. I find that acceptable. And I can probably. So as to the bill of sale, Jesse, I, I have a question for you, whether there are, I'm not sure if you could specify whether the, what of the appurtenances that are included in the bill of sale are things that we would not normally accept under the policy. So as far as the, so we have survey documents, the easements, and the one thing that I need to work on with Ms. Kurtzweil is the easement agreement. And I will try and find my list here.
What he's talking about is the easement area. If it happens to go bigger, because we got safety involved here, we're going to dig up some more of your lawn to get at it. You're not going to have a problem with that, are you? You're going to get out there with the tape measure and measure? And, you know, maybe, what, what's that?
I think that summarizes where I'm at from a legal standpoint, and I can chime in on anything that Jesse needs help on as far as the engineering.
Okay, this is Jesse Vanderkreek from HRC, which is our engineering firm.
Good evening, council. Just to elaborate a little bit on what Tim referenced, what we received in this last week was a very concise set of certified, surveyed, sealed easement documents prepared by Mega Land Corporation. It's been very beneficial at comparing what was found in the field by Mega against the actual field-measured drawings from 5A, B, C, and D that were prepared, field measurements taken in 1986, for example. I feel confident that, given the age of the development, certainly it wasn't developed under the current standards, nor were the current policy for utility acceptance standards in place at that time. I feel that this data does arm the city with the knowledge it needs to go out, locate, and identify these utilities for maintenance in the future. And really, that's what we were looking for. We do have that. That being said, there are two key notes on this easement cover sheet. One of them indicates that the sanitary, the water main and sanitary sewer structures were surveyed in the field on April 4th, 2014, in an effort to verify the easements are enclosed herein and have the proper coverage of the utility. That's key. There's only two notes here. The second one, which was an area of concern from everybody in this room, I think. Existing water mains bend and deflect in between structures that appear above ground. A combination of as-built plans and surveyed structures was compiled to best represent the existing location of the utility. Again, this does accomplish the initial objective of field verifying where those utilities are. In the event that that second note does come to fruition, that there are bends in that main between the structures, and we have to work outside the easement to repair those in the future, then the amended access agreement that Ms. Kurtzweil and Mr. Wilhelm are working on right now should satisfy that last area of concern. Now, the only thing that hasn't been done here, now that the city is armed with this, is an actual sampling of the verification of these in the field. When we brought these in in the past, the city has spent some time with a representative of the development, and sometimes a representative from our office, not always, to go out and take a sampling and just verify and make themselves comfortable that they can utilize these documents to respond, once the city does agree to take these utilities under their control. I think we've come, like the mayor said, an awful long way, and I think that shows a great deal of cooperation between all parties here, just within the last two weeks.
I have a question. The, do you have a ballpark on how much creating the documents that you intend to create that will pit the structures against what the underground is will end up costing?
I'm not proposing to create any additional documents based on what's been provided. There's been a significant amount of field engineering performed by Mega, and the meets and bounds descriptions of all the easements that should encapsulate these utilities. But again, knowing that there may be an unknown underground or deflection that may be right on the edge of a skinny 12-foot easement, and we know that the city's going to have to work outside of that easement to effectuate a repair, this modified access agreement would really resolve that concern.
Just a second.
Without the creation of additional drawings or engineering work in the field. I don't believe that's necessary. I think that that's been done.
All right. Now, you had suggested the structure-to-structure deflection, so in the event that, I mean, because we don't actually have an overlay to have a clue of whether they come within 10 feet of a structure that we would typically not accept as being appropriate. So is this, that second note agreement going to end up covering that as well?
That's the intention. That if we go out there and we've got to isolate a main between two gate valves, and we find that that main is right on the edge of that 12-foot easement, this amended access agreement would empower the city with the authority to work outside of that and complete the repairs necessary without subjecting itself to any further liability on private property. And I think that that's really the key piece of work that needs to be created to make this happen. But it's not in the form of additional engineering documents.
The only other thing that I had a concern was, this is a deviation from what our policy is. It seems like a great solution to accomplish the task at hand for this particular unit, but it does create a precedent for any other private developments that might end up wanting to take advantage of our policy and bring their systems in. So I would hate to find out that we've created a vehicle for them to not have to incur whatever expenses were necessary to fulfill our policy. I'd say it's a more modern facility, and they have, essentially, their stuff isn't so old that they would have all the electronic data and everything that would be typically necessary to, to meet our standard for, for this policy to be put into place. I don't want to leave a loophole so that they don't have to do something that they would ordinarily be obligated to, but I'm mostly concerned, I think, with probably the, the motor, or the mobile home park, because that's very old, and I don't know what kind of drawings they have that, that reflect whatever their system might end up being. So are we creating an opportunity for them to just say, "Well, you know, here's a fire hydrant, and that's where the meter is, so figure out the rest"?
Well, I, I think your, your dedication policy says that if they meet certain criteria, you will consider accepting a dedication of private utility systems. That being said, I think all of, any development that's currently developed should be evaluated as an individual project. It's going to have intricacies and different characteristics, in fact, specific to that development. There's going to be different documentation regarding the information about how the infrastructure was installed, how the development was developed, at what time, what the engineering standards were. There's a number of factors that would make each project individual, you would need to evaluate them all based on those factors. And I think that's what you've done for Colonial Acres, is you've ta, you've started with your policy, and because of the age of this and the other circumstances surrounding it, we've tried to evaluate it against the policy and identify ways where we still meet the intent of that policy, but maybe not the specific letter of it.
Well, I just would like to make sure that we're not creating something that isn't an equal application to anybody that, that wants to avail themselves of our, our offering, that's all.
I, I think if they, you know, you have the policy out there, but I think you would have to evaluate what they present to you, just as Colonial Acres has.
So if you don't have a concern about it, that we can be protected from, from this creating a mess somewhere else, then I'm fine with that.
I think you'd have to, you know, I think this particular request is being evaluated at, under its own circumstances. It has to do with any other development. I don't think that it sets a precedent, because no two particular projects are going to be that similar.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mike.
So Jesse, just to put this in plain English, it sounds like you're pretty confident that you can find the water mains. You're pretty confident you can find the sewer mains. And in the event you cannot find them, or there's some deflection, once this agreement, I think it's called expansion? Expansion access agreement? Right, right, right. Right, right. Once that's nailed down, that will cover everything else that maybe you weren't 100 percent confident about.
It will.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Joe? You know, tonight is the first time, as I recall, actually hearing from anyone representing the city that the documents have been provided and satisfactory. And I think that's a big step, and I think that is admitting that, you know, when you're wrong, that, that's, that's what you do. So I'm glad to hear that. One thing that I am concerned about is that history repeating itself. Now, I will explain a little bit further what I mean by that. Originally, we were told that it would only take two more weeks. The next city council meeting is October 13th, so that would be, by my calculation, three weeks. So my fear is that in the next three weeks, going back and forth between the attorneys and whatnot and engineering that, hey, all of a sudden, new dedicate, new documents are needed, or new policies are needed, or this document, contract is not worded right, and you know how lawyers keep and, I mean, can go back and forth. So that's, that's my concern. I'm, okay. I reviewed the tapes from the last city council meeting many times, and I'm a little disappointed about how this whole thing was handled, and it kind of goes back to what I was saying about history repeating itself. And I'll just go through how I have been presented this, and I think the city and the community and the rest of, maybe council would see it the same as me, I can't speak for everybody else, but how it's been presented to the public as I see it. We've been told repeatedly that Colonial Acres needs to provide engineering plans, and now we know that the city has been in possession of these documents since the 80s, and the city has always denied, until recently, that they did not have these documents. Now, I'm not going to accuse anybody of hiding documents, misplacing them, whatever you want to call it, but it's hard for me to accept that these documents cannot be located until recently. I find that made very concerning. Last council meeting, I learned of a missing corporate minute book, something keeping all of our records, and to this day, tonight, this minute, I have not been informed by anyone in City Hall if that has been located.
It has been located, and the additional amendment that the members from Colonial Acres were seeking has also been located and provided to them.
So this is new news to me tonight. I, apparently, it was found in the last two weeks after it's been missing for, I don't know how long, but it was found. And perhaps the most disturbing aspect to me is that the city has already gone down this road before. For years, I For years, again, denying, the city denied responsibility of controlling utilities for phases one through three of Colonial Acres. And we recently learned from the city attorney that in 1981, the city passed a resolution accepting the easements and water and sewer lines for phases one through three. So all these years, we were led to believe that the city was not responsible, when in fact, they were. So what, from what I'm seeing and I'm hearing is lost engineering documents, a missing minute book, corporate minute book, and oversights for the last 30 years, and now we need three more weeks. I'm just a little uneasy about given three more weeks.
Who said we needed three more weeks?
Well, Mr. Kramer, I believe you said that.
When did I say three more weeks?
Well, you didn't say three weeks, you said two weeks.
I didn't say anything.
Yeah, well, I'll repeat what you said.
Two weeks ago, I said two weeks. We are now on the cusp of approving this motion, and you bring up all this stuff now?
You said, I will quote you what you said, I have it right here, believe me.
I know what I said.
I am all for this 100%. I want this to get, I want to get this thing done. All I'm asking is that we have, like the mayor said, two weeks.
Yeah, and look what we've got. Did you see all the emails we received yesterday from the city attorney? Did you read any of those emails?
You know, I'm not under that position here, I'm not in court, so I don't know what you're trying to get at.
Oh, I'll save my comments for later.
Where are you?
Unbelievable.
Okay, Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I've heard today from Jesse, Mr. Wilhelm, and mostly by waving and nodding her head for Attorney Kurzweil, is a healthy dose of common sense that has happened between our last meeting and this meeting, and it sounds to me like we're on the cusp of an agreement that will satisfy everyone. I think we need, what, a document that you have collaborated on, an access agreement that resolves 95 or better percent of all of our issues? Am I correct in that, gentlemen? And Ms. Kurzweil?
I do think we need additional time to work that out.
Right.
I don't see any reason that it can't be worked out.
And would the three of you be able to estimate how much more time you need?
My client's coming in from Florida, so I'll have an opportunity to spend some time later on this week and take some things off the table for some things.
Some more negotiations.
So...
I think the access agreement is, Tim, I can only say here...
I personally witnessed comments that Ms. Kurzweil made to Mr. Wilhelm, and they're working towards a solution. I don't think it's necessarily a disagreement.
No, what it is, is the access expansive agreement is a very interesting agreement. You don't see too much of them in real estate developments, but you do use them to sort of fill in the gap when you have an issue like this. And this particular expansive agreement is, and I haven't seen your latest revision, Tim, so I apologize, I can't comment on anything that you've done, you know, for today. But on this particular expansive agreement, the client is requiring that it be temporary rather than permanent, and that it reverts back to the original easement dimensions that are in the recorded documents when the city is done using that expansive agreement. We do require, and there's nothing wrong with that, you have access to that expansive agreement 24/7 for emergencies, whatever, and additionally, I add some language for comfort for my client, that if the city should approach a building within 10 feet, that we somehow have a property manager, did you see that? Just be contacted so that they can do a little bit of assessment that relieves the city from making a decision as to whether to continue at that point, and the decision to continue then can be made by the property manager, and then that way the city is sort of relieved from the responsibility of making a decision as to whether or not further use of the easement will interfere with pavement, sidewalks, structures, et cetera. So it's a very unique easement agreement. I've done only three of these in my real estate career, but they do come in very, very useful, and this is carefully drafted, and your attorney, the city attorney, Tim, has just been very wonderful on getting the document back to me, and so we moved very quickly on it over the weekend. So I want to thank you for your time, so.
Thank you.
So then, to finish my comments, that and the opportunity for our staff to go out and actually locate a sample of the various utilities, that needs to be done yet, and that could be done in what time of, kind of a timeframe, Bob?
As fast as we can get out there. We've been working very hard with repairing bridges that were destroyed over the past week, preparing for Pumpkin Fest, mowing, taking care of the city. It's an added job that we do, but we're going to do it.
Okay. So if, I'm prepared to make a motion that we postpone this matter then to our next regular scheduled meeting, if I have some assurances that we can, in fact, vote on the motion at that time.
Why put a timeline on it? I mean, when they've got their work done, we can end up acting on it accordingly.
Well, the option would be then to table it, and it's much more efficient.
We're right at the brink of this being concluded, so I don't, I'm not understanding why they're at official timelines.
I'm not throwing up the objections, I'm just trying to get us on schedule, and that puts it on our agenda. It appears just as it does today, and it's published agenda, it's part of the orders of business.
Ted.
All right, thank you.
Ted.
Thank you. Yes, Aaron.
Ms. Kurzweil, are you representing, are you speaking for the Colonial Acres people tonight? I mean, I guess I'd like to hear from some of the Colonial Acres people if they feel this is going in the right direction, and if they're happy with, if they're happy with the progress that was made, and if they're ready to just hang on till the next meeting and get their answer then. I mean, I just want to, I just want to hear from the Colonial Acres residents. I mean, we've heard from Jesse that you're pretty satisfied, and you heard from Tim that you're pretty satisfied, and we're all on the brink of this cusp or whatever people are calling it, and I just want to make sure that the Colonial Acres citizens are feeling that too.
Well, I...
And I don't know who's representing.
Well, first of all, I represent the land owner, and that's the Colonial Home Club Land Company, and actually, I'm going to be with them this week, they will be coming into town, and so later on this week, I'll have an opportunity to discuss. I will be quite frank with you, I was not clear that, or aware that we were that close to getting this resolved. So I'm hearing this for the first time, that we are 95% there and on the cusp. These are not words, and I apologize, Tim, if you've sent me anything, I have not reviewed it, so maybe you've made those comments in a...
Jesse and I spoke, not to cut you off, but Jesse and I spoke after you and I spoke, and I think he's clarified that he now has field-measured drawings for the entire development, which changes some of the circumstances that I, you and I have talked about.
All I can do is, I can recommend to my client, when we're together Friday, and say that I attended a council meeting, was very positive. There appears to be a really good flow here on the HR, and I'll have her, hopefully this will be on tape, so that they themselves can review the council meeting and hear what HRC has to say, and other individuals that will be with them, that they'll be talking to this week. And I think that in good faith, I will tell them to sit back and let's see where we are at. When's the next meeting?
The 13th.
13th. I will just recommend, that would be my recommendation to them, to do that. As to Colonial Acres Phase Five, they have waived a conflict of interest, and so I have been making some representations for them in some of the communications, but I think probably this is an issue if they want to come up and say something, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if they made their own statements.
I'd like to hear, so that I can be more educated in a vote, so yeah, I'd like, if there's just one person here that would like to say that you feel that it's in good faith or whatever, or you feel it's going in the right direction, I'd sure like to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl McGrail, I live at 62622 Raleigh Court, and I've heard all these arguments back and forth, and please forgive my ignorance of protocol. I live on Raleigh Court, and the property behind me has been sold, which was part of Phase Five. We had the lease on it, and the lease was dissolved for that piece of property. So at the planning commission meeting several weeks ago, we found out that there's going to be 60 single detached condos put in there, when originally, there was only supposed to be one more street put back there with 15 buildings, and I worry about the impact when you're talking about sewer expansion and all that. How's that going to impact us? When they build this complex back there and tie into our sewer system, is it, are basements going to be flooding like what's been going on like in Royal, because of all the additional building? So I'm concerned about that. I had looked back at articles, and back in '84, or whenever it was, they said that when that street was complete back there, that our sewer, our water system, our sewer system would be maxed out. So that's my concern. I don't want to be having flooded basements, and as Ms. Kurzweil pointed out two weeks ago, that it wouldn't cost you, we could get a special committee and have a special assessment, which means all of us will be paying for all the sewer repairs. That's my fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Claude Danielson, 25111 Jefferson Court. I guess I started all of this back five years ago, so I think that we could wait till the next meeting if we're assured that we're going to get a finalization of this. I think we're all very tired of this, and we'd like to see it come to completion, and we see that there's a good progress, and we'd be willing to wait one more meeting.
And I understand what Glenn says about, you know, why you have the time, but I understand Harvey's point too, where, you know, we all work better when we have a deadline.
Right.
We all do.
Anyway, there's been a lot of talk back and forth, and we want to be very good neighbors. We've been good neighbors for 30 years, and we haven't really put that much expense on the city compared to the taxes and the water rates that we pay. So we just hope this will come to a good conclusion and get it done with. I'm getting too old to fight this.
Thanks, Claude.
Thanks, Claude.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
You know, with that being said, I...
Harvey, did you make a motion?
I did. Said I was willing to.
Let him talk, let Joe talk.
No, I just had a question, I'm sorry.
I'm hearing a lot of good feedback, and like I said, the, you know, the past that's happened with the city and, you know, me being a somewhat new resident, it just kind of caught me off guard, a little shocked, because I'm a new person comparatively to a lot of people here. So to hear all this past is kind of hard for me, so that's why I felt it was necessary to bring it up. But what I'm hearing is a lot of good feedback, a lot of good faith, you know, so that was my intention of my comments, was to make sure that this does keep driving forward, because if we don't put the pressure on it, it won't drive forward, and it could be, so it sounds like things are going forward, and with the comments by Mr. Danielson, I feel very confident that this will get resolved in the next three weeks. So since there is a consensus of our council, I wish to withdraw my motion, but with that being said, I realize that we can always make another motion, and we can move forward, so.
Are you making that as a motion, you want to withdraw it?
Under the condition that this will be...
Resolved?
Resolved, or I guess want to say brought back on the table in three weeks, or however we want to phrase it. Maybe I can look to the attorney, our city attorney, for...
I would suggest, just a common sense, add it to the agenda for the October 13th council meeting. It can just be a general reference to Colonial Acres utility dedication. At that point, it would be a matter of, characterize it as old business, and the council can address it in any way they feel appropriate with a motion.
Is that going to be enough time for you too, Bob? Don't you have something to do? Yeah? So you're good with that?
That's Columbus State.
That timeframe, you feel comfortable?
Me?
Yeah. No, no, you feel comfortable with that timeframe too?
We'll get out there.
Check valves and all that.
It's going to be a nice week.
Are we open Columbus State?
Yes, we're open Columbus State.
No, I know the courts are, are closed, so I was just wondering if we were open.
You're off on Columbus Day.
Federal holidays.
I discovered the world for guys.
Motion to postpone what you did before?
You know what? Yeah, I think we should, like I said, I think, I'm willing to withdraw it, but I think we should still keep it on the, somehow on the agenda in some way, shape.
That's not a problem.
There's absolutely no reason for you to need to withdraw. The motion will still be on the table, it'll be the exact same motion we talked about today, it'll be on the agenda on our 13th October meeting. I think you're making it harder on yourself than you need to.
All right. We will...
All right, then I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this matter until our meeting on October 13th, October 2014.
Further discussions? You clear now for we're at on?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor say, do we have to do a roll call, are we going to?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Voila.
Nicely done.
Voila. Yep. Now, we move on to managers' report.
The weekly report is not quite complete, so it will go out tomorrow. That's why you didn't get it in your email today, but it will come out tomorrow. You will also be getting a summary before the next council meeting on the sessions that I attended at the ICMA conference, as well as several other vendors that I talked to, with some interesting information that I think the city should consider in the future for both economic development as well as progress for the city, and that will be in my report on the conference I attended. I'm looking forward to Pumpkin Fest this weekend, I hope to see everyone there, I'm volunteering on both Saturday and Sunday, so I hope to see everybody there at different opportunities, and other than that, that's all I've got today.
Okay, thank you. Bev?
I just want to say that I've been working with Colonial Acres in Phase Five ever since I got elected to the city council. That was part of my thing for city council, was to be able to help the people of Colonial Acres, so I'm glad to see that this will finally come to an end, and I'm looking forward to Pumpkin Fest too, and I hope we have great weather.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the Pumpkin Fest is still looking for volunteers. If you are interested in volunteering, please go to the South Lion Pumpkin Fest web site, which is www.southlionpumpkinfest.com. There is a tab for volunteering, please use that tab, and please volunteer if you have the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Harvey?
Looking forward to the car show this week and the Pumpkin Fest, of course, and I want to thank all the people involved in the negotiations on this difficult matter for their hard work and diligence, and thank you, people, for showing up, second week in a row or meeting in a row. It's good to see us getting this done. Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I as well want to thank everybody for coming out. I mean, when I was elected, I made a point of talking to people, and I just realized how engaged people are in this community and how much they care, and seeing so many people here, especially for such an important issue, is really, it's truly great. There's city council meetings where we have hardly anybody here, and when I see a full house like this, I think it's great for our community, shows that we're involved, and just want to thank everybody for coming. Also, I as well look forward to the Pumpkin Fest, it's going to be a great event, happy to volunteer for that as well. And one thing I did want to ask for Ms. Lander was regarding the city's website, and I was just curious if we've given any thought to, I don't say improving it, but updating it in any way. It seems like it's been quite some years since it's been looked at.
Actually, it's one of the vendors that I talked to at conference that would come in and be able to update the website, also be able to... also be able to take over doing the recording of the meetings, take our packets, index all of our packets and our minutes, and index them to PDFs, and bring everything a lot further advanced electronically. It's something that I'd like to talk to you all about for possibly next fiscal year.
That's great, because I know there's people a lot smarter than me who can go out there and do amazing things with websites and make it pictures crisp and nice links. And I don't think, I mean, I know college kids that can do this for, you know, a couple hundred bucks or whatever it is, so, thank you.
I don't listen to amounts, you don't know.
You're right, thank you, Ted. With that, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Erin?
Well, considering Pumpkin Fest is in my front yard, I'll be there.
I was going to say, you're going to have special edition seating over there when they sell out?
It is going to be, yeah. It's going to be, actually, I've already sold my front yard. So it is, my front yard is not under my control on Saturday night.
I don't get free parking there?
No, I've sold my yard, my yard has been sold to the highest bidder. I have no control of what happens on my front yard on Saturday.
There's two spots left at my yard, so...
I put out that, I put out the bid, and there was an organization that hired my front lawn.
All righty, Glenn?
Well, pretty much apparent what everybody else has said, this has been a long, kind of contentious at times, but obviously, we're coming to an accord now. So I feel good that everybody's got a comfortable feeling we're coming to the end. I hope that... There's been a history of, you know, these guys are bad, those guys are bad, and I'm hoping that people are getting enlightened to the fact that there's, no one's really bad. There's been misunderstandings along the way. People put their heads together, and we've come to the brink of a solution. So I'm glad to see that this is getting to the end. I will be down at Pumpkin Fest helping on Friday to build the pumpkin, or the hay pyramid and...
Straw.
Straw, that's right, I'm not a farm boy, so the distinction is lost on me, but... But trying to get that whole thing going, and I certainly look forward to seeing some good music down there. And I'll probably even have an adult beverage while I'm there, so. And I did want to say that in reference to your question about whether the Pumpkin Fest parade will be on, we don't make the videos. There was a comment at our last meeting about the fact that the football game wasn't on there. And as it turned out, the guy that makes the videos, that is on the cable commission, had advertising, which has clearly been prohibited by our policy for cable commission, so, or for cable programming to go onto our station. So once that gets squared away, you know, the games will be back on. Whether or not they intend to provide video of the parade, I'm hoping that that takes place, but as I say, we don't do it in-house, so. That's all I had, thanks.
Thank you. The car show you were alluding to was the Wednesday one, right?
Wednesday night.
Yeah, there's one Wednesday, folks.
Last one.
The last one, you know, the Wednesday ones, once a month. Homecoming, first time in since the 30s, maybe? I don't know. There will be no homecoming parade. They've opted out on that, they're just going to have a big party in their parking lot for their kids, and that's going to be their function, I guess. Yep, and then, and then remember, the Pumpkin Fest parade is Saturday at 10 o'clock through town. The weather forecast is awesome. And I mentioned the historical, or the Deepwater Days last time, but I want to, I didn't mention that the Historical Society put that on. We're talking about a handful of people put that on. They're desperate for more people to join, and I see some historic people sitting in the audience here. I mean, if we were to add these years up, we've got about 7,000 years in here. And they just need, they meet once a month, it's very social, they have cookies and drinks sometime. I mean, it's just, but it's history stuff about South Lion, and it gets you involved a little bit. It's not a lot of labor to it, we need volunteers, desperately need volunteers to just join, if nothing else, the Historical Society. It means very a lot, and much to our community, that's for sure. And, let's see. As far as the commission, we haven't received any, the TV cable commission reports. We've not, I don't know how many times they've met or where they're headed on that, but we've not ever seen a report from them. And the South Lion football team is awesome, by the way. Homecoming Friday night, if you don't go to the concert, or go to the band behind Ten Pennies, because there's going to be two nights of that. It's homecoming for South Lion, and it's a, South Lion is a very good football team. I followed them closely, as you know, for 31 years. They went out and beat Northville for the first time in 16 years. And Northville was highly, highly ranked, and it was kind of humorous to watch their reaction to it. They were flat out knocked on their heels, and South Lion won great, and I'm talking about the South Lion Lions, of course. And they're fun, exciting, you know, high school football is fun to watch anyways. And with that, I think we're about done here, and I appreciate the fact that the audience didn't just jump up and go. You know, when you were done with your segment, you hung around, I really appreciate that. And this is what happens, you get the comments from the council, and you can learn some more stuff that way as well. So salute to you folks for doing that. Okay, we need to go to a closed session, now I'm going to kick you out of here to talk about a land issue.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss a real estate matter.
This portion that was on TV lasted approximately 55 minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, vote?
Kimmel?
Well, yes.
Rizzi?
I thought it was so weird though.
Yes.
Yes, yes.